Adjustment meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. One, notice published in the Courier News. Two, notice posted in the Bolton, on the Bolton Board of the Municipal Building. Three, notice made available to the Township Clerk. Four, notice sent to the Courier News and the Stalletta. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio? Mr. Blount?
Here.
Mr. Matarondo?
Here.
Mr. Ellie?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum?
We do.
We have five.
Sir, will everyone please stand for the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, ever changing. Thank you. Mr. Caneley, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, there are. The application NBAD one LLC, four thirty-one Park Avenue, is being carried to May ninth, two thousand twenty-four with no further notice. Next, the appeal on Sparks Car Wash, Stelton Road, has been withdrawn. Finally, L N R Properties, that application on sixty Normandy Drive, has been moved to the planning board. Those are all the changes I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Caneley. Okay, moving right along.
Mr. Weissman, I would like to note, Mr. Reggio is on the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Reggio. The application.
Come on.
Item number six. Twenty-three Z B one oh four slash one oh five B, Transcontinental Steel Inc.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, all present. My name is Kevin Morse, Attorney, Woodbridge, New Jersey. I am appearing on behalf of the applicant, Transcontinental Steel Incorporated. Subject property is block eight oh five, lot thirty-one, commonly known as two oh one Eleventh Street in Piscataway Township. We are before you this evening for preliminary and final site plan use and bulk variance approval requests for the subject property. To set the table, give you a little background. Former applicant, for, the former occupant of the property was the company everybody knows, Binsky and Snyder. They'd been in business there for about twenty-five years, a business fixture in the community. They conducted a custom pipe fabrication business with outdoor storage, which is a permitted use, of course, in the ally zone where most of this property is located. They were there without a formal site plan approval. That company really recently ceased operations. The applicant, Transcontinental Steel, some of you may recall, actually appeared before this board on June twenty-second of two thousand twenty-three, where we sought a temporary use permit, so that Transcontinental Steel could move in and conduct business operations. That temporary use permit was granted. It was memorialized by a resolution dated July thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three. And one of the provisos in that resolution was that we submit a request for formal site plan approval to the board, which, of course, we have done and were before you this evening seeking that. I can tell you, since the permit was issued, the applicant's principal, Joel Rosenthal, acquired the property, owned it, owns it now with his real estate holding company. And Transcontinental Steel has moved in and commenced its business operations. Mr. Caneley, before we proceed, I just want to confirm, I previously submitted our affidavits of publication in mailing. I wanted to make sure that they were received, that they are in order, so that the board has jurisdiction to proceed this evening.
They were received, they are in order, and the board has jurisdiction to proceed.
All right, so folks, I have two witnesses this evening, Joel Rosenthal, who's the principal of the applicant, who's testified before you before, and Angelo Valletudo, who hasn't testified on this application yet, but I know you know his credentials as well. So I would first call Mr. Rosenthal if he could be sworn, please.
Mr. Rosenthal, could you raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Do.
Your name and address, please?
Joel Rosenthal, home address twenty-nine Summer Court, Westfield, New Jersey.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rosenthal, you are the owner of Transcontinental Steel Incorporated, is that correct?
Correct.
And it is a steel fabrication business, which I understand has been conducting operations since nineteen ninety-nine, is that correct?
Ninety-six, but yes.
Ninety-six, I was close. Right now, previously you were conducting business operations at a site in Newark, New Jersey. And as you've heard me describe to the board in the history of the property, you've acquired the subject property, moved your business, and joined the Piscataway Business Community. And I understand you commenced operations in the fall of last year, is that accurate?
Correct.
All right, so I'm going to ask you to confirm testimony that you had previously placed before this board back in June, when we appeared and you testified regarding our application for the temporary use permit. Again, just describe for the board what the steel fabrication business produces, what you do.
We fabricate building parts for mostly jobs around New York City.
Okay, and the steel fabrication has commenced and will continue to be conducted indoors at the existing building at the property that you moved into, is that correct?
Correct.
And there is an outdoor storage component for either material or finished fabricated product, which you're commencing and doing right now, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, that outdoor storage has and will continue to be located at the property in the area that's depicted on the site plan, basically where it was before when you moved in. We're now formally showing it on the site plan. We will let Mr. Valletudo give some details on that, correct?
Yes.
Right now, this outdoor storage again is predominantly on racks, with some on wood blocking on the ground, and the height of the racking will not exceed twelve feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Right now, to confirm again, your hours of operation, your business hours are Monday through Friday, seven A M. to five thirty P M. And Saturday, seven A M. to, seven A M. to one P M., is that correct? All right. And again, as you previously testified, your staff is forty employees on site during business operations, about twenty-five in the shop area inside the building, and maybe fifteen in an office area in the building. And that varies a little bit from day to day, is that accurate?
Correct.
Right now, based upon your business only, Transcontinental, you testify there's sufficient parking on the property to accommodate the vehicles of your employees?
Yes.
And I understand those vehicles are either personal employee vehicles, or some of them are work pickup trucks for your business that they utilize, is that correct?
Correct.
And I do also understand that you mentioned to me a number of your workers, is it typical, these type of work environments, actually carpool to work, so they, a few guys come in with a car, is that correct?
Yes.
Right now, again, to confirm your deliveries, average delivery is one steel trailer incoming per day for material and two steel trailers outgoing per week with product, is that still accurate?
Yes.
Mr. Morse, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes.
I just want the record to reflect that Mr. Hayduka has joined the meeting. And since testimony has just commenced, I believe he would be eligible to vote on the application if we get to a vote tonight, and we now have seven members.
Right, thank you very much, Mr. Caneley. All right, so now, Mr. Rosenthal, you've been, you've been in operation of the site since the fall, number of months now. And I understand your business operations have not created any type of issues for the surrounding neighborhood, is that accurate?
None, none I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, you've made a big investment into the Piscataway Business Community. I just ask you, are you happy with the relocation of your business from Newark to Piscataway?
Yes.
All right, now, one thing we are additionally requesting, besides the approvals for your business, the formal approvals, is you have a portion of the existing building that space you don't need to utilize, and you have a proposed tenant lined up to occupy that space, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, I understand that proposed tenant is a business known as Like New Products, is that accurate?
Yes.
Right now, from what I understand, the Like New Products business is a, is a business that does or conducts small electronic repairs and refurbishments, is that correct? Now, I also understand that these repairs and refurbishments, basically done for the Amazon company, and it has to do with fixing up small electronic items like cell phones or iPads, things of that style in nature, is that accurate?
Yes.
Now, this particular tenant, I understand, would get one delivery a day to the site, and either an Amazon or UPS box truck, is that accurate?
Yes.
And on that one-day delivery, boxes are offloaded for, with items that need to be worked on, and bo, and boxes are also unloaded with repaired and refurbished items ready to go back out, is that accurate?
Correct.
Now, importantly here, all work of this proposed tenant within the existing building, that's going to be conducted inside the building only, is that accurate?
Yes.
And there's absolutely no outdoor storage component proposed or required for this proposed tenant, is that accurate?
Yes.
All right, now, with regard to your tenant's operations, I understand they're a little, little less than yours. Their operations would be Monday through Friday, eight A M. to five P M.
Correct.
And they don't have any weekend hours, is that accurate?
Correct.
And I understand there'll be approximately ten tenant employees at their, their tenant space, is that correct?
Yes.
And in the nature of this business, it's a little, a little bit hybrid. I understand some of those employees will actually drive to work, correct?
Yes.
But I also understand that this particular business has a number of other locations, and that they often will drop employees off in a van because they'll put certain employees in different areas depending on the workload of the different sites, is that accurate?
Correct.
So some of the employees, I understand, typically will actually not be driving or parking on the property anyway, although there's sufficient parking to accommodate all ten if they did park at the property, is that correct?
Correct.
Right. So based upon your business, now you've settled in for a couple of months, the proposed tenant, is it your opinion, as an experienced businessman, that the site will, has and will continue to operate adequately, egress and ingress? Also, your parking, that will accommodate both your business and that of your proposed tenant?
Based on the proposed site plan, yes.
Right. All right, so look, I have no further questions of Mr. Rosenthal at this point. Mr. Valletudo is going to give you some more details. Mr. Rosenthal will be here for the entire hearing if questions come up. Unless there are questions now, I'll move on to my next witness.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I have a number of questions, and I think it's probably more appropriate to ask Mr. Rosenthal than to Mr. Valletudo.
Okay.
Go ahead.
There are two reports on this application, one a staff report, and it's dated revised April seventeenth, and a second report, a revised report of myself, dated April twenty-second, both referring to the latest revised site plan submission. My report and the staff report, I think, can be considered collectively because we get to the same items. But the items I think need to address was Mr. Rosenthal is the outside storing as a proposal of racks twelve feet high, is that correct?
Yes, that, currently, they're already there, and when I met, I don't want to, when I met with, before I bought the property, that's, that's what they asked for. And they asked us to put them on that, we'll call it the sideline, closer to Eleventh Street, and that's where we put them.
The fence you propose is six feet high, correct?
I don't recall proposing a fence.
There's a, there's an existing, there's a fencing around lots of the property.
Correct.
In some cases, it's excellent condition, and in some cases, it's in terrible condition.
Agreed. The, the, the area where the racks are right now are all bush covered. We'll, we'll, we'll fix the fence there, but it's all, you can't see it from the street as it is now.
Well, I haven't been able to get to that site since the revised plan came, and I didn't know what you were going to do. So I'll take you at your word that it's.
Thank you.
It was the shrubbery was there then, and it's still there.
I'm sorry to repeat that?
The shrubbery was there, and it's still.
Yeah, the shrubbery's been there since way before, I mean, it's tall, way before we moved in, honestly, way taller than twelve feet.
Have you, have you reviewed the staff report?
I went through it briefly with Mr. Morse, I got it around four thirty today.
I can tell you, Mr. Chadwick, just so you know, and, and Mr. Rosenthal will confirm, Mr. Valletudo and I are prepared to go through these item by item, most of it pretty quickly, because there's really not, not a lot. And I will have Mr. Rosenthal confirm on the record, because I think we'll get through it quicker and we'll cover everything, and he will confirm what we already discussed with him earlier today, if that's okay with you. If not, we can do it the other way.
The one item is, one of the variances is the outside storage.
Correct.
And you're proposing to be twelve feet in the air. And both reports from myself and the staff suggest lowering that. And I think you could probably have a compromise if, in fact, the landscaping that exists covers up this new storage area, then I think the height is at twelve feet is acceptable. If it's looming over the top of the fence, then I think you would need to return and either demonstrate to the board, do landscaping to be installed, or lowering, lowering the racks, or a combination.
I, I could comfortably say the fence is a lot lower than the landscaping, and the landscaping more than covers the racks that are already there. And honestly, I don't believe they're more than ten feet tall, but I'll, I'll double check that.
All right, so you're comfortable with that as a compromise?
I, I'm comfortable that if the landscaping doesn't cover the racks, that, that we.
Let's go back to Mr. Morse. Do you have a better way of moving this along, be my guest?
No, no, it's, I'm not suggesting.
No, I agree.
Please, don't, don't misunderstand me, I just, we had taken the time, and I want to make sure we hit everything and address every item for you. So.
Right ahead.
All right, so look, I'll, I'll call Angelo Valletudo. I don't want to change your procedure in any way, shape, or form, but if Angelo can testify, and then we'll wrap it up with whatever else the questions are, if he could be sworn, please.
You swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do. Angelo J. Valletudo, V A L E T U T T O, four twenty-four Amboy Avenue, Woodbridge, licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Both licenses are in good stead, and I've had the opportunity.
Mr. Valletudo has been accepted as an expert engineer and planner before this, on numerous occasions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so if you're accepting in both disciplines, I would first call him in his capacity as an engineer. Mr. Valletudo, you prepared the plans that are before the board this evening, is that correct?
We have, and the revisions are, as you had stated earlier, in response to the original staff memorandum, and we believe has resulted in an improvement to the plan, and hopefully something that everybody will be happy with.
Yeah, and, and just so the board's aware, we filed the site plan, we got a staff report, and we took the time to go through the first staff report and address almost all of the items on that report to refine the plan. So I'm happy to report, when we go through that in a minute, all that stuff has been covered. We took that opportunity so that you could see that we could comply with the items and otherwise follow your suggestion. So that being said, just briefly, describe the site as it exists today.
Well, the site I like to refer to as a peninsula, in that it has three frontages, which makes it difficult from the standpoint of the setbacks, and that's part of the bulks that are existing that we are asking to continue. In addition, the vacation of the street that ran through the property and parallel to Eleventh is really what the split zoning was. Everything to the Eleventh Street side is in the L I light industrial, and everything beyond it is in the yard ten, which lends itself to the number of variances that were identified in Ms. Corcoran's report.
All right, so just describe the generally, the improvements to the site.
Well, a major improvement to the site is with regard to a parking lot that we are proposing coming in off of Mansfield Road. We have it set back twenty-three feet to allow for that heavy growth that has Mr. Rosenthal had indicated that exists pretty much along the corner of the intersection of Mansfield and Eleventh, and would help buffer the parking lot. We're showing a, a number of spaces of thirty-two parking spaces on that parking lot with regard to the additional parking spaces that exist on the main property now. We come up with a total of fifty spaces that are striped, including ten that we are proposing for E V spaces. And with regard to the E V spaces, it is our proposal to put four of them into ready use as an E V parking and to balance the remaining six in accordance to what the law is, and I believe it's over six years to accommodate that. And even without seeking any credit for the E V spaces, we have more than enough that's required for not only for the main purpose Mr. Rosenthal's use, but also for the tenants' use.
All right. And the building itself is already constructed. There is three existing outdoor storage trailers, they're located behind the building, is that accurate?
Yeah, in the back corner. Essentially, these were containers that were up against the building by the prior tenant, and Mr. Rosenthal had them moved into what I call a horseshoe shape, and then he put a canopy over the top to allow his men to be able to do some ready repairs without getting into disrupting and doing it outside.
All right, thank you. And then we have the outdoor storage racking, is that correct?
That is correct, and the racking, and I can support what Mr. Rosenthal had indicated. If you are a pedestrian walking along Mansfield or the frontage of Eleventh, we are, it, it's covered by the growth. I wouldn't call it shrubs, just the overgrowth of it, so that you don't see it. And the racks, which we have a detail on the plan, are really racks that have three different levels, and the top level keeps it under the twelve mark at a little over eleven and a half. But certainly, it would be my suggestion, recommendation to Mr. Rosenthal that something he's already agreed to. So I'll just say we'll obviously include that into any hopeful condition of approval we are fortunate to receive.
All right, from a drainage perspective, there's the proposed improvements that we have, I know they're limited. Is that going to create any negative impact with regard to drainage on adjacent or neighboring properties?
No, sir, none whatsoever, whatever. And again, the grading and the stormwater management, which is in the staff memorandum, is to be reviewed by the township engineer, and we accept that as a condition, which is, is not an issue.
All right, so let's go through then, since you brought it up. First, let's look at the staff memorandum dated April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. I just want to make sure we go through the items so we have accuracy. Items one and two are acceptable, correct?
They are, and I believe there's notes on both of them, and if there isn't on the second, we can add it, but I believe we have a note there.
Item three, you will provide planning testimony momentarily.
Correct.
Item four is accurate, no signage is proposed. The applicant does understand if we need to put signage that doesn't conform or result in us coming back here for relief, correct?
That is correct.
Right now, item five, there was initially a request for a traffic impact statement, however, we believe that had to do, and the original application had parking proposed along the side of Eleventh Street that backed out onto the street. That was disfavored by staff, which is one of the reasons why we revised the plan, which I believe eliminated the circulation report. With regard to the driveways or the swing gates, I understand in the turning templates requested, as well as item six, the parking spaces, you'll confirm those items to the satisfaction of the Township Engineering Department, but do you believe those all work appropriately?
We will, and if in the event the wing gates do not work, we always have an option of using a sliding gate, but we believe we can make it work with the existing gates. And again, one of the items that was touched upon by Mr. Chadwick, we do indicate that the entire perimeter of the property that has the fencing will be repaired, removed, replaced as necessary to meet the township standards. And one of the major conditions that we have on the plan is that the, all of the barbed wires is going to be removed.
All right, items seven through fourteen, we've reviewed those, those are all acceptable, correct?
That is correct.
And, and particularly with item eight, the corner rounding easements, I sent, I sent those over to the township attorney today. They were in place already, they were offered, or, and they're recorded, produced for the, in favor of the municipality by the prior owner, so that's already done, and I sent those to the township attorney. Fifteen shipping containers, you talked about that, there are three, we do agree with the.
Well, did you indicate that nine through fourteen were going to comply with?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Fifteen shipping containers, you testified there are three, request here that they shall not be stacked on top of each other. We are prepared to accept that condition, there's no intention to stack them. And then there's the limitation of they're not higher than twelve feet either, correct?
That is correct, and there's no intention, the, the layout, as we've described them, and it's out there now, and it has been out there every time I've visited the site, is what the proposal is, there's no intention for stacking or anything else. It was just, as I indicated, to use the three that were already on the site so as to prevent a somewhat covered area for repair work to be done, without having going into the building.
All right, now, item sixteen, we already talked about the storage rack height. Item seventeen, the lighting, I understand that Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. Morse, why don't we put a note on that? There's probably some minor revision, put a note in of no stacking or inventory higher than twelve feet, so it's right on the plan.
That would be fine. Item seventeen, the lighting plan, board should be aware of that, when Mr. Rosenthal acquired the site, little green initiative, but he took all the bulbs out and replaced them with L E D lighting, which of course is efficient and much more, much more energy efficient. I think he only added two fixtures, Mr. Rosenthal, is that correct, and they shine towards the building itself, is that right?
All the ones on the building are the same fixtures are replaced. We added two in the parking lot that face back towards the building.
All right, so the only item, and I'll cross over to Mr. Chadwick's report, that I believe we would, would need to comment on your report, Mr. Chadwick, which is number five. Of like a light out provision.
Yeah, any problem with that?
I think we can work that out with staff, obviously, we need security lighting, as you've denoted, you know, at some point. We're prepared to work with staff to an acceptable resolution of that.
Fine.
All right. Eighteen, we've, is acceptable.
You've agreed to that, right?
Like nineteen, note on the plan already, that's acceptable. Number twenty, E V spaces, we did have discussions today earlier with staff. You know, there's a sliding scale, you start with two, it goes up to nine, in the spirit of cooperation, we would agree to initially have four spaces made ready, and then follow the status of the law when they have, further spaces have to be implemented. So a little more than we initially would need to start with, but that's a bit in the spirit of cooperation as we, you know, improve the sites overall for operations. Items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, those are acceptable.
Yeah, in fact, we believe that they are on the current revised plans. I had the benefit from Peter Checo, who provided me with all the current details for the township. However, we obviously will agree that we will comply to meet the township standards for all improvements on this site.
All right, then, with regard to items twenty-four, twenty-five, there's a request for some plantings along Eleventh Street and some shade trees. I can tell you, because my client had a thought, it's something I think we can resolve, subject to the satisfaction of all parties. There's a long building facade, and I did speak to the township attorney today, because it would require some, some input from the township, but we may be in a position, if, if the township agrees to offer that as a, some type of municipal mural to be painted along the whole side of the building, and there was some interest and receptivity to that suggestion, again, subject to a mutual agreement, that might be a student initiative. It's right across from the park, might be beautification. Might be a beautification thing, so with regard to twenty-four and twenty-five. We request that we have the ability to work that out to the satisfaction of. The landscape architect. And also possibly with a. As an alternative part of that might be a mural, some offset. But leave that subject to working out with staff, that's acceptable.
With regard to number twenty-six. We will agree because the existing vegetative wooded buffer to the back, which is in the residential zone and buffers are used from all the residential. Properties. Will be happy to meet on site and go through the entire area to ensure that we meet what they're looking for. Not only in terms of trees to be replaced, but also in terms of the type of trees and the heights, which are already identified in staff memo.
Right, so that being said, and then moving over to Mr. Chadwick's memo, I think at this point, Mr. Chadwick.
I think he's been covered with the other comments.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, so that would be our, and I just want to confirm, Mr. Rosenthal, we did have the opportunity, you've heard the representations. Mr. Valletudo, discussions, you're in agreement with the. The itemization and responses to the two memos that we discussed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got that, so unless there are any technical or engineering questions at this point from Mr. Valletudo. I'm prepared to have him switch over, put his planning hat on and. Have him testify with regard to his planning analysis.
Go ahead.
All right, so Mr. Valletudo, I'm going to ask you to switch gears now. You had the opportunity to review the application from the standpoint of professional planning, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Right, I would ask you to detail your analysis for the board, any conclusions or opinions that you have reached and the basis for them.
Definitely, and as part of it, I visited sites, the surrounding neighborhood. Drove around, walked around, and I think I did it inconspicuous enough because nobody called the police to say I was a stalker.
And in fact, you've been over to that site on a number of occasions, working with Mr. Rosenthal, it wasn't just the one time for this hearing, but you've been there on multiple occasions, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, so.
We reviewed the zoning ordinance, master plan, New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. The surrounding neighborhood is. Pretty much, we're at the center point, meaning everything across the street is that beautiful. Park, field, there's also a park across from Mansfield. Some light industrial uses as you go on the other side of Pelham, and then once you. Go into the R ten zone, it's all a nice, well-developed, single-family residential units. As far as the use of the property. The, was already stated, Transcontinental Steel. Has been in possession and currently in use of the property pursuant to the temporary use permit that was approved by the zoning board. Of adjustment by resolution dated July thirteen, twenty twenty-three. The majority of property is located in LI one zone, the industrial. With the balance of the property, which is pretty much the northerly, I would say twenty-five percent is in the R ten residential zone. Which lends itself into a majority of the variances because the use, which has existed. As has been already testified and confirmed with Mr. Chadwick's report for over twenty-five years. The applicant uses the property for, as was already testified, a steel fabrication business with outdoor storage. And anyone who's visited the site knows. This is not where people can go in and just pick up some copper, iron, just to try to get out. These pieces are substantial and. And would not be easy for anyone to try to attempt to remove them. The applicant doesn't propose any changes to the footprint of the existing building at the property. And all the fabrication will occur indoors. The outdoor storage is conducted for business operations of this Transcontinental Steel only. The applicant utilizes nearly all of the same equipment, operations, outdoor storage, and the processes that were previously used by the. Prior owner, operator of the property, Binsky and Snyder, which occupied the property for approximately twenty-five years. The applicant also proposes, as was introduced by both. Mr. Morris and Mr. Rosenthal. To use a portion of the existing building of the property for electronics refurbishing business. Which the business will not conduct any outdoor storage on the property. Thus, from a planning use perspective, based on the consistency between the prior use of the property. And the applicant's current and proposed use of the property. Property will continue to be used as the same light industrial purpose that it has been for over twenty-five years. Use variance approval is requested inasmuch as while the proposed use of the property is permitted within the LI zone. It's not permitted in the rear twenty-five, thirty percent of the property, which is the R ten residential zone. As the proposed outdoor storage and long-term use of shipping containers is not a permitted use in either of those zones. The bulk variance approval is also requested as noted in the site plan note number three zoning requirements. And specifically identified in Ms. Corcoran's report. In terms of the positive criteria or the special reasons, looking at the municipal land use law. Forty colon fifty-five D dash two, I offer the four. As for consideration, letter A to encourage the municipal. Action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state. In a manner which will promote the public health safely, morals, and general welfare. Letter C to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Both of which are really not changing with regard to the main development. The only change, as we spoke, is with regard to the outside storage with regard to racks and on the pallets. Letter G to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses. And open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements. In order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And as always, my favorite, letter M, to encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures. And activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to a more efficient use of the land. And we're going to achieve that, all of the utilities that service the property are in place. We did agree with regard to staff's comments to put in some conduits for. The future expansion of underground. Utilities and that the fact that we are as part of the. Request by the. By staff, putting in curving and sidewalk around the entire perimeter, which will also assist in these goals by providing for a safe pedestrian travel. With regard to the particular suitability of the site, the longstanding prior and continued use has. Been permitted in the LI one zone for over twenty-five years, really confirms that the property is particularly suited for the continued use. And that the applicant is seeking for the reasons I've testified. It is something that has been. Pretty much consistent with regard to its location as it relates to the adjoining residential use. Site improvements requested do not change the particular suitability of the site. But rather are nice improvements that simply enhance the continued use of the property as we propose. The property has existed with its light industrial use for these many years as part of the fabric, as I indicated, of the surrounding area. In terms of the enhanced quality of proof, as such, this application is not, in my opinion, inconsistent with the master plan and zoning ordinance. As far as negative criteria. The request of relief, in my opinion, can be granted. Without substantial detriment to the public good for the reasons I have so testified to and which was already discussed. With regard to the rats, the outside storage, and to have it buffered pretty much from. The adjoining properties, the residential, and also the traveling public on the streets that we front on. I see no detriment to the public good and no negative impact on any adjacent properties. Number two, without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. As the application is not inconsistent with the master plan and zoning ordinance, again, for the reasons that I have so stated. It is also my opinion that the bulk variance requests are equally subsumed by the use requests, which carry a higher standard. Of proofs, which I believe the applicant has satisfied based on our presentation and my testimony. Nevertheless, the bulk variants requested by the applicant are cognizable. Under the C one or hardship analysis. Due to exceptional odd shape, and as I indicated, calling it a peninsula. Peninsula with three front yards, which requires setbacks with regard to all three of our frontages. That. A new hardship would be placed upon giving the majority of the property is located in the LI one zone. Also known as the industrial zone, with the remaining twenty-five, thirty percent in the R ten zone. Which is, as we've discussed, the residential zone. The bulk variances requested by the applicant, in my opinion, are cognizable also under the C two. Or flexible C analysis as the application meets the criteria as well. Number one, relates to a specific piece of property, it's a unique piece of property, given its location, surrounding uses. And the two zones it's located in and the requirements thereunder. And also the fact that it has been utilized for similar uses for well over twenty-five years. Number two, that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance. Requirements, again, for the same reasons that I've already testified to under the applicant's use variance application. Under either bulk variance relief analysis, again, the negative criteria, in my opinion, are satisfied. The fact that the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I see no detriment, only ultimately will be a positive benefits. From everything with the improvements along the public right of way. To the enhancements with the mural or landscaping that will ultimately be. Proposed along the building frontage on the Eleventh Street. That the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. Again, I see no detriment. And finally, that the requested variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the city's own plan and zoning ordinance. As I've testified throughout my discussion.
All right, that concludes your planning testimony, Mr. Valletudo.
It does subject to any questions by the board or when they open to the public.
All right, so that would conclude our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. John, do you have any questions or concerns at this point?
I think the going through the staff report at length. Satisfies the use variance criteria. And also it set up all the conditions which I'm sure Mr. Caneely took down that they've agreed to.
Yes, I did.
I think is the complete case and it's. I think more important, it's a building, old tired building, they're going to fix up, dress up, fix up the outside. The mural part of the application is very interesting. Concept, I think it could add. From the park, the look at this wall would be a vastly different perspective, I think would be. Something that would be somewhat unique.
And that was Mr. Rosenthal's suggestion, and you know, sort of embrace the community a little bit. Give it a canvas to perhaps work on, so hopefully we can work that out.
I think it would be, it's a unique setting and it's across from the park. And it's probably something that can be. Done over and over.
That may be true.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Anyone on the board have any questions, comments, or concerns at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, comments, or concerns at this time?
No one, Chairman.
Thank you, I'd like to close the public portion of this meeting, and I would like to make a motion to approve this application, can I get a second?
Oh, a second.
Thank you. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio? We lost him. Mr. Blam?
Yes.
Mr. Haydaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Morris, we will memorialize this at our next meeting and send a copy to you. All right, thank you, I would ask, could you please send me a draft, Mr. Caneely, just want to make sure that we. Cover everything we talked about. Yes, there will be a lot of conditions, so we will review those together before we vote on it. I appreciate that, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for your time, have a pleasant evening.
You too.
Thank you. Good night, thank you.
Moving on to item number ten on the agenda. Adoption of resolution from the regular meeting of April eleventh.
The first resolution is Manish Patel, which you voted to approve, Mr. Tillery? Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Oregio?
Yes.
Mr. Hayduka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Second is Bailey Toriano, which you voted to approve, Mr. Tillery? Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Oregio?
Yes.
Mr. Hayduka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Blum?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions for this evening.
Thank you. Item number eleven, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It carries. Finally, item number twelve, adjournment. Make a motion to adjourn, do I get a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, good night.